I will be thy name, I came to come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and give us our first blessings, as we forgive those who trespass against us, who is not to temptation, that liberates from evil, and that is the kingdom, and our glory forever.
Join me in flags of teaching, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item one, citizens' participation. This is that time in our agenda where you can come speak to us, if you would like to come speak to us, and come to the podium, introduce yourself, sign in, give us your information. And you have a three-minute speaking limit, and we have a 12-minute per topic limit. So if you'd like to speak with us, now would be the time.
Richard.
Do roll call.
Oh, do roll call. Call or roll. We're all here.
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 Okay. My name is Gene Greenfield. I live at 1917 North Broadway. And I just had some real quick comments, because I know some other people want to speak. And of course, it regards the Broadway project. This whole Broadway project is obviously a Blue Zone-driven project. Blue Zones, let's not forget, is a for-profit company. And the company that's being considered for the design work is a Blue Zones-approved company. Is that a coincidence? Probably not. I just ask, in the interest of transparency and trust, that before you light a proverbial match to this stack of taxpayer money, and cause much hardship on many Broadway residents, that any of those on this commission with any outside business connections with Blue Zones, please abstain from voting. Thank you.
My name is Linda A.G. I've got a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to mention was something I noticed on the agenda that I thought was a little strange, and that is, there's three awards that you're going to look at tonight to bid. Two of those awards in the memorandum had a dollar figure in there that they were requesting be awarded, and also it had a list of all the bids and how much those bids were, and made mention of the fact that those contractors that were being recommended had the low bid. But on the third item, the one that had to do with the Broadway project, in the memorandum, there was nothing about any amount of money that was supposed to be awarded, and there was also nothing in there about whether or not that was the low bid or not. And when you get to that item on the agenda, I hope that you will discuss that and let the public know about that. And as all of you know, a couple of years ago, $7 million was transferred out of the street fund to cover overspending in other departments, and that, those were supposed to, that $7 million was approved by you in the budget for street projects, and it was transferred out, and a lot of street projects were put on hold, including, I know an engineer at the time was working on 45th Street intersection improvements in preparation for the widening of 45th Street. But he told me personally that he was notified to cease work immediately, and so that project was put on hold, it was delayed, I don't know what the plans are now to get that done. But the fact is that the city was in dire financial straits at that time. As you know, Eric Benson was brought in, and the first thing that he did was start cutting personnel, he encouraged over 20 people to retire, there were position cuts, programs and services and long-term contracts were canceled. So why in the world did the commission, at the same time earmark $600,000 for a nice-to-have but not necessary new street project, when the streets were in such a dire situation that all the money that had been funded was transferred out? And also, the half-cent sales tax that voters passed, a portion of that money was supposed to go for 45th Street widening, but I understand from listening to a budget presentation by the city treasurer at the time, that that money now has been allocated for Kickapoo Street project, which was fully funded at one time, and that that money will probably never be paid back. So I just hope that in the future, as far as the agenda, if maybe you could be a little more transparent with the public regarding Agenda Item 13C, I think that would go a long way toward having the citizens have more confidence in city government.
Hi, my name is Kami Ingles. I'm here today to ask the commissioners to move forward with the Broadway project, because I believe it will benefit our community as a whole. We don't really even need to look at the national studies that are done, or even look at Blue Zones information that they're providing, because I know those numbers may cause some contradictory with some of the people's beliefs that are against the project. But what I would ask you to do instead is to look at the history, recent history, of when the city does actual investment in our community, and what that does for economic development. The example I'd like to use is the recent investment in the downtown area, in the Streetscape project. The city made a large investment in downtown recently, and what has followed is a vast improvement and a lot of investment in the downtown area, including my own personal business. So whenever investors and new business owners see the city committing to spending money in certain areas, private money follows. All you have to do is sort of look downtown to see that happening. You have lots of thriving businesses now, not just dispensaries, lots of thriving businesses, because the city chose to make investments in our future in a historic part of downtown. I think that the reason that it's important to do this on Broadway, I am a Broadway resident so selfishly, I think it would be great for my city to look beautiful, or for my street to be beautiful. But also, it's a main thoroughfare, and it's very visible when people come to our community, when they're driving down Broadway, it's just, the homes are historic. Homes like Broadway, the homes in similar neighborhoods in Oklahoma City and Tulsa sell for, on average, $300 to $450 a square foot, which our homes are about $60 to $100 a square foot for our historic neighborhoods. So that's a major selling point to people, young professionals, when they move to the city, they see, oh, my gosh, I can get this home in Shawnee that would cost me four times as much in another city, I'd love to live in this beautiful historic neighborhood. And the addition and commitment from the city to beautify that area and create sort of this main beautiful thoroughfare will only create more confidence in private investment. And that's not just, it's not just bike lanes and street lamps, it's a radiating effect. So you do this one project, it creates a bustling effect where people take pride in their homes and are committed to investing in their properties and buying more properties. It makes us more competitive with the professional, with the young professionals looking to move to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kami.
I'm Madonna Bryce, and I am against this Broadway project. Yes, Broadway is historical, yes, Broadway is a beautiful town, a beautiful street, but when people are forced to have to start parking in their yards, it's not going to be beautiful anymore. And recently, I posted one of my listings on Facebook. This is a beautiful house outside of Shawnee, in the rural. And I had a comment, a lady commented, and she said, this is an absolutely gorgeous house. Well, my reply is, great, let's set up a showing on it. She said, but it's in Shawnee, I can't live in Shawnee. I said, why? She said, because the crime is too great, and the homelessness is too great. So we could put bike paths down Shawnee, down Broadway, but if you do not address the ugly side, you can make the pretty side pretty all you want to, and you're still not going to have people coming in. And also, I understand that the city of Shawnee used Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and Marion, Iowa, as their model for Blue Zones coming here. I'm sure that you all have already known this, but I read this on internet, I researched it, and they have dropped their Blue Zones contracts because it's costing them too much money. So I think that we need to address other issues, and once you address those issues, then you're going to have the influx of people coming in. Thank you. I have one more question, I'm sorry. How many miles of bike paths is Blue Zone requiring? How many miles do, when they come in, do they require a city to make? Does anybody know? I'd like to know that.
My name is Glenn Peck, I live on Comanche Circle. And permit me to use as something of a preamble tonight. My attorney and my wife have a copy of my will and all related papers. Furthermore, I have a home already bought for me and paid for in a place called Heaven. So with that as a preamble, permit me to say, I do not live on Broadway. I don't know all of the challenges those dear folks have, I don't know. What concerns me is the process that we've gotten to this point. Admittedly, I joined the ballgame already in progress. I was not there at the start. But at that Fourth of December meeting, there were discussions made about possibly alternatives, compromise, I don't know if that's been happened or not, I can't say that I know. I can tell you this. Blue Zones has hypnotized, mesmerized, and if it's a word, maybe our distinguished counselor at law over here can tell me, fractionalized this city. Is it worth it? Notwithstanding the cost, notwithstanding all of the inconveniences, is it worth it to have a banner or a sign that says, this is a Blue Zones community? Is it worth it? I don't have to tell you, folks, that this may be your last turnoff. And if you do turn off, I'll ask you to do something. Going to some of our feeder streets, at least the ones I drive on, they are full of potholes. Go down a little bit south of here, there's a lot of places there that could use some mighty, mighty good lighting. I believe that this meeting, perhaps, is really a touchstone meeting. It will have seminal effect for years to come, as to who runs this city. Is it Blue Zones, or is it the people? That decision, guys and ladies, is up to you.
My name is Carrie McIntyre, and I live in the Enchanted Forest subdivision off of 45th Street, and I have a concern about the zoning request change for that chunk of land right there at Bryant Via and 45th. Mostly, it's questions, I would like to know more about the development being proposed for that area. I tried Googling it and found some interesting things about the Center for the Developmentally Challenged, which I think is a really worthy effort. But my concern basically is about the traffic impact on 45th Street. Enchanted Forest has one street that you can come and go to that whole subdivision from, and between the churches off of 45th and the Gordon Cooper Tech Center, 45th is very heavily traveled, and I'm very concerned about the impact for that subdivision so that we can come and go with ease and safety more than anything. So again, little explanation about the center being proposed for that area, and concerns about the impact on traffic. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Glave, I'm the administrative pastor of New Beginnings Church on 42nd Street. In today's agenda, you're going to be talking about the preliminary plot for Hyatt Edition Section Four. I appeared at the Planning Commission meeting last week to discuss it, because there were some requirements in 2013 made by the Planning Commission and the city commissioners to pave half of 42nd Street and to create a extension of Hyatt Boulevard down to 42nd Street. In the Planning Commission meeting, it was brought up that that's a private street, and so they were wondering how the city commission could require that back in 2013. In my research, I found out that on November 6, 2006, the city commissioners designated 42nd Street as a collector's street. In January 16 of 2007, the city commissioners accepted the easement for public highway and utilities for 42nd Street. It's utilities and public highway. In 2013, the city commissioners approved the Hyatt Edition Section Three with the requirement that the developer pave half of 42nd Street and continue Hyatt Boulevard down to 42nd Street to create a second access, so that they wouldn't have to go on 45th Street. In this last year, in 2019, the city commissioners adopted the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. On page 171 of that plan, it states, quote, "Large developments with one access point can leave homes and businesses isolated during emergencies. The more access points or street connections that a development has, the easier for emergency personnel to reach areas in need of their service." Right now, the Hyatt Edition has almost 120 homes with one point of access off of 45th Street, which again is a real problem, because it's right across the street from Gordon Cooper's access. If anything happens at that intersection, and the fire department or emergency vehicles needed to get down into the Hyatt Edition, they have no way to get there. The requirement was in the next phase, which is Phase Four, that they were supposed to continue that street and pave 42nd Street. And then the Planning Commission decided last week that that was not a requirement that they needed to do right now. So I just want to say, I'm not here to create a burden on the developer, but the city and the developer and the people along 42nd Street need to come to a dialogue on what to do. It's one of the worst streets in the city, and it's, you know, we had a funeral there this year for a law enforcement officer that was killed, and we had about 150 law enforcement officers from all over the state, they don't know that that's a private road, they think that's a city street, it says 42nd Street, and it's in deplorable condition. I just ask that you look at it and see what we can do. Thank you.
My name's Rob Morris, I live over off of Windsor Court. However, for about 10 years, I lived a block and a half off of Broadway on Drummond. And I also think the Broadway project is a bad idea. It's not money well-spent for us, it's not things that we need. Just take Market and Drummond, one block down, which for a lot of us high school kids back in the day, was where you could go real fast and jump, because there's a huge dip in the road. And when it rains real hard, it floods, it's impassable through there. There's things we could do for drainage, every winter, we have pipes that break everywhere because they're old, because they haven't had anything done to them. We could put that money towards the infrastructure of this town, and worry about some of the smaller beautification things after we know we have solid footing to stand on. My other thing, real quickly, and if I happen to be speaking wrong here, by all means, somebody nod or let me know, I saw about the tax increase for dispensaries as far as licensing goes. I have no bit in any kind of business for that, it's just my opinion here. I saw that y'all used the Broken Arrow as far as how they do it, what they charge, and I'm curious if y'all did an actual breakdown of how much the licensing costs per year that you think you would bring in, how that goes towards hourly wage, monthly, and even yearly, of the people that are going to be doing those licenses, and if that money matches up dollar for dollar, because this is not a reason to just raise taxes to do so. If we raise taxes to do so, there's no end to that, because you can always find a reason to raise taxes for something. We've done it in Shawnee for my 40 years of life. Excuse me. So I'm curious to see if there has been a breakdown of all the actual costs that go into that, for each person that's going to do those licenses, like I said, their hourly wage, how much time they're going to spend on it, per week, per month, per year, and if it matches up dollar for dollar. I mean, an extra $10,000 a year, an extra $100,000 a year, well, that's just a tax increase. And when that comes down to it, the people that actually do use those dispensaries, those dispensaries will do one thing, they'll start paying more, they'll raise prices. And in the long run, the only people it hurts are the people that put money into our town by buying from those dispensaries. So it does no good for the people of Shawnee, other than it costs people more money to live. So if there has been a breakdown of that, I didn't find it, I'd like to know if there was, and if there's an actual justification for it, and not just, we need more money to do licenses. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Going, going? Go. Item two, consider, would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Seconded by Commissioner Harrod. Call question. We're blank up here. This monitor's not on. It's not on.
I don't think anybody turned it on.
It's just not powered on. There we go, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item three, animal control, not here this week. Item four, consideration of approval proposal with Young Strategies for Tourism Lodging Market Analysis, Visitor Profile Research, and Strategic Planning. Stacy, oh, Chance.
You get me again. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have the opportunity for us to engage with Young Strategies Incorporated, they are a market research firm for direct market areas. This is an opportunity for our tourism department to further streamline and become more industry standard. What they will do for us is they're going to provide lodging market analysis, visitor profile research, and strategic planning. So this will, the ultimate product that we'll receive is a true marketing plan for our community with evidence that is supported by market objectives. Mr. Young has been doing this for approximately 30-plus years, he's served over 150 communities in 34 states, including Oklahoma, he has four or five markets here that he's currently working in. We have interviewed and reviewed all of the references he's provided, in fact, Stacy, I believe you've worked with him before in the past, he is a world beater. Funding for this will come over hotel motel tax dollars for our tourism department. If you guys have any questions, I'll have to answer, or Stacy can answer more detailed.
Questions of Stacy or Chance?
I'd comment, I've visited research, it's an online survey, I'm not, what other kind of survey do they plan on running, it's just an online survey.
I believe online is how they're trying to reach individuals, and Stacy, you might be able to better answer this, I believe they're trying to capture 1,000 surveys for individuals, and then 200 for commercial.
They felt that the online survey really was the best way to reach people both in our community and outside of our community, as that market, they also do some physical meetings, both with our partners here and with potential tourism partners throughout the state and the region. So there will be in-person as well.
I guess I'm not, I'm probably the only one in here that's not too up on, spend much time on the internet or emails or anything like that, I know that's the mass communication of today, but I'm just trying to assure myself that it's actually, you know, it's worth the effort.
I know that one of his post projects includes kind of a post-market survey, so our guests who come here will get a survey that's say, what did you enjoy, you know, what can we do better, what do we do well, and then we can take and implement those activities as well. So that's where that digital survey really comes in handy. Market Analysis, Visitor Profile Research, and Strategic Planning. Stacy, oh, Chance.
Yeah. You give me a guess. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have the opportunity for us to engage with Young Strategies Incorporated. They are a market research firm for direct market areas. This is an opportunity for our tourism department to further streamline and become more industry standard. What they will do for us is they're going to provide lodging market analysis, visitor profile research, and strategic planning. So this will, the ultimate product that we'll receive is a true marketing plan for our community with evidence that is supported by market objectives. Mr. Young has been doing this for approximately thirty-plus years. He's served over one hundred and fifty communities in thirty-four states, including Oklahoma. He has four or five markets here that he's currently working in. We have interviewed and reviewed all of the references he's provided. In fact, we've, Stacy, I believe you've worked with him before in the past. He is a world beater. This, the funding for this will come over hotel motel tax dollars for our tourism department. If you guys have any questions I have to answer, or Stacy can answer more detailed.
Questions of Stacy or Chance?
Well, I'd comment, I'm a business researcher. It's an online survey. I'm not, what other kind of survey do they plan on running besides just an online survey?
I believe online is how they're trying to reach individuals. And Stacy, you might be able to better answer this. I believe they're trying to capture a thousand surveys for individuals and then two hundred for commercial.
They felt that the online survey really was the best way to reach people both in our community and outside of our community as that market. They also do some physical meetings, both with our partners here and with potential tourism partners throughout the state and the region. So there will be in-person as well.
I guess I'm not, I'm probably the only one in here that's not too up on, spend much time on the internet or emails or anything like that. I know that's the mass communication of today, but I just trying to assure myself that it's actually, you know, it's worth the effort.
I know that one of his post projects includes kind of a post-market survey. So our guests who come here will get a survey that say, what did you enjoy? You know, what can we do better? What do we do well? And then we can take and implement those activities as well. So that's where that digital survey really comes in handy.
So he's charging fifteen dollars a survey? He said a thousand surveys at fifteen thousand dollars?
Well, the scope of the study itself is beyond the surveys. That's just one piece of information.
You will, you will end up, when this is done, you'll end up with a full marketing plan for the community.
Right.
So the fee includes the surveys plus follow-up work, plus the development of a marketing plan and the implementation of the strategies to put that plan in motion.
He will aggregate all of this survey information he receives in order to receive a profile so he can determine what types of consumers are in Shawnee, how, what's their economic status, how much can they spend, what are they after, what type of entertainment they're here to procure.
But the breakdown coming here is a business research online survey for potential visitors. So that's a line item on third quote.
On that projected billing schedule, sort of, just on page five, what it's telling.
I think that's just the fee for his time to aggregate all that data.
So it's, there's more in that bulk than just the survey?
Right, than just the survey itself, that's correct.
So this is a similar plan to what the Oklahoma Department of Tourism kind of suggested that we do in a meeting that we had
Yes.
a few months ago. I knew they made a pretty strong suggestion that we needed to do something similar, so...
Certainly. Mr. Berkeley will design a unique plan for Shawnee as he does for all of his other communities that he works for. And we're going to be able to pull his experience to find out what we don't know about our community from the outside.
I think they use those words, you don't know what you don't know.
You don't know what you don't know.
That's what the state told us.
Other questions? Comments?
Is there a limit on how much we're going to pay out on this survey? Or is it just open-ended?
There is. The total contract is thirty-seven thousand six fifty.
And all of this comes out of our tourism budget?
That's correct. And keep in mind, this is a long-range strategy, so this is not an every-year expenditure.
Other questions of Chance or Stacy? Would entertain a motion.
Sir, second.
Moved by Commissioner Sehorn, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item five, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located six hundred and thirty feet west of the northwest corner of East Forty Fifth Street and North Bryan Avenue containing forty point oh eight acres from A1 Rural Agricultural District to PUD planned unit development for the proposed purpose of a campus for the National Institute on Developmental Delays, case P-0120, applicant Mass Architects, Inc.
All right. Good evening. So this is a forty-acre property off of Bryan and Forty Fifth Street. This organization is active today in our community and has been for the last few decades. It currently operates on the Abbey property adjacent to what we all know as the old St. Gregory's campus or the new OBU Green Campus. They really work with families who have children with developmental disabilities or delays so that they can provide tools to be successful. They also have alarming statistics that show if your child has some of these developmental issues or delays, that the parent or the fathers of the children are quick to leave the scene, leaving mom alone with the kid. And so what they do here is really a retreat center. There would be no permanent housing on this particular development, as you see in the master plan. And they would have a few cabins where families could come maybe on a three-day retreat and have tools given to them that would help them be successful. They do a lot of horse therapy, so they talk about having horse trails on the property. There is a hundred-year floodplain that kind of meanders through this forty acres. And so nothing would be able to be built on that, but it is perfect for natural trails, horse trails, things of that nature. They would be required by ordinance to do a landscape or a fencing buffer. You'll notice on the west side, they're going to be adjacent to Woodsong Edition. So that would help to screen and create privacy. They also have, in a separate phase, plans to have an indoor swimming pool, a children's museum, and things that would be great for these families but could potentially be open to the citizens of Shawnee when they weren't in use for retreats. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have. Obviously, this is a very unique development, so staff funneled it through the planned unit development route instead of a traditional rezone because we really don't, it doesn't fit inside a box. It's really kind of customized for their specific needs.
Any questions of Rebecca?
Do you know how long they've been up there?
I know it's over thirty years. So it's a, it's a well-known organization, well-established in Shawnee.
Am I correct? From what I know about the one at St. Gregory's, if it's relocated here, that's a low traffic impact on that area that was asked earlier. There's very few come and go at a time.
Yes, absolutely. So that's another thing. There's only a handful of cabins for families to come on these retreats. And so we don't anticipate amped-up traffic volume that's going to unload onto Forty Fifth Street. We are aware of Forty Fifth Street and that we will need to plan for some expansion in the future. But this is going to be a very low-density development.
And the percentage of that that could be usable is pretty low because of the floodplain?
It is. It's probably forty to fifty percent of what they could actually use to build on.
Other questions of Rebecca? Okay. Thanks, Rebecca. Staff recommends approval. The public hearing is hereby declared open. If there is someone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal, come to
Thank you, members of this council. My name is Dwayne Mass. I'm senior principal architect at Mass Architects. I'm very proud to be associated with Father Paul and his program. Father Paul has been a fixture in the Shawnee community for, I believe, fifty-five years. He has been serving families. This program is something that I came to know some time back, about a year ago when I wanted to get, when I offered to get involved with it. It is a worthy project. It is one of the projects that I find are the best for a community because what this project brings is a different type of infrastructure. Cities have two infrastructures. They have hard infrastructure, which are streets and our pipes this building we're in, but it also has projects that form the social infrastructure, the things that care and advance a community. When we care for, when we provide the facilities that care for individuals with these challenges, specifically children, we are building upon the social infrastructure of the community of Shawnee. I would say that when we are done with this, the percentage of development we wish to do is very low. It is our hope that when we are done, we want to take out no grandfather trees. We, as, if you look at the master plan, you can see we're engaging probably less than eight percent of the ground. The bulk of it will remain, as is, somewhat of an urban forest filled with walking trails, riding trails, things that we would hope would that the citizens of Shawnee could come out in an evening and have a nice place to walk, a beautiful trail amongst nature. So that is, not only is the goal of this to serve this great program, but also to provide something that the city is, benefits greatly from. I would also like to reserve a few moments of my time for a gentleman who is a great driver on this project, and that is Governor Henry, if he could come up and speak for a few moments after me. But if you have any specific technical questions about the project or the development, I would love to answer them, those specific technical questions.
Any questions of Dwayne?
Synopsis, perhaps, just for general information?
Synopsis, sir, of the project? Yes, sir. There will be a small administrative building near the entry. The cluster of, due to the way the project lies, right down the middle of it is a very large, what we call a blue line, you don't touch. That means it is, the core has identified that creek that those profiles must remain. So that limits the area we can develop on, so we have to be somewhat creative. We have the administrative building as you come in. Shortly thereafter, we will have, the largest building will be a gymnasium building that will also contain the kitchen, will serve as a cafeteria. There will be a small programs building. There will be a building for a small indoor pool, be a small riding arena. And when I say this, this is a horse therapy. I should not use the word arena because we all think of rodeo. Please think of, the correct word would be a riding therapy area. It's a place where you bring a child in, nice sand cushion, you put them on the horse, and you lead them around, a very small area. So horse therapy is a better word. The cabins we have are very small cabins. The first phase of this is, we're going to have to do this in phases, of course, because this is all, we're going to have to go raise this money. So the first phase will be very small, probably the administration building, programs building, and gymnasium, and a few cabins. The end project, we would like to have a chapel, is another building, we would love to have a small chapel. We would love to have a family services building, a place, each of these buildings now, think smalls, think three and four thousand square feet each, think very small buildings, each one not bigger than a house. So we will have this, the family services buildings where families can come in. We would also have, the children's museum that is stated is more about to tell a story about the program. Please don't think a large, think a very small intimate setting. We also hope, long-term, and you'll see on the master plan, we would love to do something that we're a great proponent of. We've done on several projects, community gardens. We've had great success in these, in these projects benefiting the community. The last one we did, Blue Cross and Blue Shield came and adopted. And the employees, they can either work at their desk or they can go work at this community garden for Blue Cross Blue Shield. Once a month, they stop, or excuse me, once a week, they give out the vegetables. So not only do we want this to be a bridge for those children, less fortunate, and if you know any children who are intellectually or developmentally disabled, you know they need our help more than anyone, but also a better bridge for our community, sir.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry for that long answer.
Thank you for your very complete definition and mind picture of what does, is there and is created there, seeing?
Thank you, sir.
It's not a new program for Shawnee because Father Paul's had this, Father Paul's had this for years out there. I know kids have volunteered, OBU students volunteer, St. Gregory's students, people in the community volunteer to help with the horses and lead the kids around, so this is not a new concept or a new idea. It's just changing places as all it amounts to.
Yes, sir. But is it not a beautiful thing? I mean, Shawnee, you talk about bragging rights. You're talking about bragging rights for a community. This is something a community can brag about, to be able to have this level of service. And the other thing that's beautiful about these gentlemen, when they discuss the program with us and other things, it's like, how can we help more folks? We've sat and talked about eventually maybe a way to share through an online presence or a telemed presence, you know, where you call somebody looking for help, that they'll be able to help anyone anywhere with a child. And for me, the most beautiful thing is their focus is to keep the family together and the family strong.
Such peripherals like this are pretty much a statement of and present picture of what a community really is.
Yes, sir.
More than, almost than the larger things, but it shows you're getting down into the meat of some of the more difficult situations.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Other questions of Dwayne? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? You don't normally have to take a second fiddle down here.
Are you going to make him introduce himself?
I couldn't resist. My name is Brad Henry, and I think, I know many of you, so I assume you remember me. I was born and raised in this wonderful community. I love Shawnee. And I couldn't resist the opportunity to address you tonight for a couple of reasons. One, this is kind of like the circle of life for me because I was thinking back, thirty years ago, I was sitting right there on that council table as a twenty-six-year-old lawyer, serving as the city attorney for the city of Shawnee. It was one of, one of my favorite memories. And oddly, a couple of our current commissioners served during that same time, thirty years ago. I, my gosh, Commissioner Gillum and Commissioner Harrod, you guys don't age at all. I'm surprised, but, and, you know, I mean, this is...
I came on the commission at eighteen years of age, by the way.
That must have been it, obviously. But it's a little bit like Old Home Week. I've known the mayor for as long as I can remember. Darren, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rutherford and I grew up together and used to go to the lake and do all sorts of things, and, of course, the Seahorns and the Salters are pillars of the community. So it's just an honor. And I don't know Ed as well, but, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bolt, I keep trying to call everybody by their first name. But I just wanted to take a very brief opportunity and sort of explain this from my perspective. Terry West and I own this property. Terry and my father, Charles Henry, who were partners years and years ago, bought this property, gosh, back in the sixties. And they've sat on it ever since then. I inherited my father's portion of this property, and so Terry and I own it together. And over the years, and in particular, more recently, we've been approached by several people who are interested in, you know, they've looked at the floodplain issues and, and they're interested in putting things like small strip, retail strip malls in there. And as you know, I used to own the property right at the corner of Forty Fifth and Bryan, on Bryan Street, my law office was there. And the last thing I wanted to be a part of was anything that would be potentially detrimental to the residents there. I can remember when there were no housing additions there, and I watched them literally grow up in front of me. And many of my friends live in those neighborhoods. So Terry and I have really been pretty stingy about what we're going to do with this, this property. There's not a whole lot that can be developed on it, as you've heard, but when Father Paul Zoller approached me a couple of years ago, and I had gotten to know Father Paul, I mean, when I was just a tiny, tiny boy here in Shawnee, I learned to swim in Father Paul's swim program out at St. Gregory's. And then when my wife, Kim, and I had our first born, were twins, and many of you know that we lost one of our twins, Lindsay, but Lindsay was diagnosed with a very rare neuromuscular disease at the age of two months and was not expected to live to be much, to live much longer than that. And Father Paul, when he found out, he contacted me and he said, hey, why don't you bring Lindsay out here to our program? What we do is we, we work with children with developmental delays and disabilities to help them become more independent and have a better quality of life. And so Kim and I took Lindsay out to Father Paul's program, and although she passed away at seven months, she lived quite a bit longer than the doctors expected. at seven months, she lived quite a bit longer than the doctors expected. And I attribute much of that to Father Paul and his program. And, and I know that, that she enjoyed a higher quality of life because of the work that he does, helping children with disabilities and others become more independent so that they can integrate into society like, you know, normal members of society. It's just a great program. And I want to stress that this, this development will have, I think you've seen the, the architectural renderings, but it will have a, a park-like, campus-like feel to it, atmosphere to it, with walking trails and ponds, and a very low-density development that should have very insignificant impact on the traffic in that area. And this is the kind of development that, that I had hoped we could figure out how to put on this property. I just didn't know it would be with this great program that Father Paul started back in the 60s. He's been here for a long, long time, and he's here to stay. And I'm very proud to be a part of it. And Terry and I have agreed to donate this property to Home Integration, which is the corporate entity, the umbrella entity that Father Paul works under. But we know that under Father Paul's stewardship, great things are going to happen at this property. And I would just hope that, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but I would urge this, this good commission to, to approve this rezoning, because I think this will be something that this community can be very proud of.
You're twisting my arm.
That was the point, Commissioner.
Any questions of Governor Henry? Thank you very much, Governor.
Thank you. It's very good to see you all again.
Nice to see you.
Truly is the circle of life here.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else would care to speak in favor of the program? Anyone care to speak against the, opposed to the program? Would close the public hearing? Is there any further discussion?
I'd move with approval.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Gillum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to WIP, the west half of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 32, Township 11 North, range four east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification A1, Rural Agricultural District, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item six, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located 60 feet east of the northeast corner of North Harrison Avenue and East Whitaker Street, containing .11 acres from R2, Combined Residential District, to C3, Highway Commercial District, for the proposed purpose of commercial development, case PO220, applicant Judy Ackerman.
The applicant owns the adjacent, the two adjacent properties on the corner. If this rezone is approved, her desire would be to combine those into one C3 lot. And I don't believe that she has any contract at this time, but would like the opportunity to market that as a commercial property. And that is in line with our new 2040 comprehensive plan. And we show that being a main arterial for our community, and therefore expect a lot of commercial development right there, especially on a corner lot. And staff does recommend approval of this item, as well as planning commission from last week. With that, I would entertain any questions.
Any questions of Rebecca?
That's just a vague call.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Declare the public hearing open if there is anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal. Anyone? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gillum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to WIP, lots 21 and 22, Block A of the amended plat of Block 2 of the amended plat of Whitaker's addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, from zoning classification R2, Combined Residential District, to C3, Highway Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 1310 North Kickapoo Avenue, containing .29 acres from C3 Highway Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District with conditional use permit for a cell tower, case PO320, applicant Troy Williams.
This is a two-pronged application, so they actually went to our zoning board of adjustment for a height variance, and that is because our zoning code, as it's written, came out right when cell towers were kind of becoming a thing. And when they were constructed back then, and they were a monopole tower, that if there was a natural disaster, it would just fall over. So our ordinance at the time required 80% radius around that as kind of a protection in case it did fall. It wouldn't fall on someone's business or someone's house, there would be that buffer there. And the engineering and design has evolved since then, and now what you're seeing more of is the sectional towers. So if there is something, and they have very high wind speed ratings, and they're able to withstand tornadoes, other things that we get here in Oklahoma, and they are self-collapsing, so they will actually self-collapse within the compound. And this lease space that we're talking about at 1310 is about 2,500 square feet. And you may be familiar with the property, there's a billboard on it that is for Firelake Discount Foods at this time. There is the Lock Supply parking lot and ONG that is adjacent to this property. They have submitted letters of support of this application in your packet. So with that said, the zoning board of adjustment did approve that variance, and taking into consideration that the type of engineering and construction of this tower is not going to impact, and there's nothing around it to impact. So that was granted. And it does require by, by our code, a conditional use permit. And this is going to be an AT&amp;T tower, and it's going to be a, a first responder tower. It's also going to increase data and wireless for our area. And with the lease agreement, I'm sorry, I'm flipping through my notes, with the lease agreement, they are going to fence and landscape that 2,500-foot area and maintain it. And so it will look better tomorrow than it does today with the approval of this application. With that said, staff has recommended approval, a planning commission unanimously recommended approval at our meeting last week, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So that's going to allow any other development on that lot, or is that in that area? Does that pretty well take it up, or what?
No, I believe adjacent to that are parking lots for Lock Supply and ONG. They could build something on their property if they wanted to. And that 2,500 square foot would be reserved for AT&amp;T's tower and just the landscaping, so nothing else could go within that compound space.
So that's pretty well takes up the small lot then?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's a parking lot then, both south of it, too, that goes with the property there that Locks has.
This isn't going to have to look like a tree, is it?
I think the tree looks pretty good.
We did not recommend that for this location. And I think the difference is, that was adjacent to some residential property, and so we do, if you want to drive down 45th behind the veterinary clinic, we have a really nice monopine tree that's actually a cell tower, and it's pretty cool. And Chance says we can't decorate it for Christmas, but it is pretty cool if you haven't seen it.
Nice-looking, perfectly-shaped tree.
It is, it's lovely. This would just be the regular style.
Any other nonsensical questions? Is there a motion? Do we have a public hearing yet? I'll declare the public hearing open if there's someone here that would like to speak in favor of this proposal.
My name's Troy Williams. No, I don't have my room. Do you need my address, too? Ms. Blaine already pretty much explained everything. We actually, I actually leased, I did the leasing on that site as well, as the famous monopine. We leased the whole lot, and you're not allowed to block that billboard, and the billboard's cocked at an angle, that's why I asked, got permission from OEC, or, excuse me, ONG and Lock Supply to kind of put it up in that corner out of the way. But we will also maintain that 100-by-125 lot, because some of the pictures that we, that I presented showed growth and other stuff out there. So that's part of the, our responsibility as well. It is a full-blown cell towers, cell tower, cellular data, broadband Wi-Fi, and has the first net, first responders dedicated spectrum. It already has a, an interest, entrance, curb cut and everything, drives in. There'll be a lot of cleanup, of course, but, and we'll be getting natural gas for the natural gas generator. That, you asked if something else could be built on there. This property, this area town is unique when the creek that's on the east side of Kickapoo, actually behind the businesses, backs up, it actually flows north, comes right up through here, right up through ONG, for that matter. So we had to do a floodplain certificate, that's why it's taken me so long to get to you, because that whole area had to be mapped. So we have to raise up the platform two feet off the, it's two feet in the flood, so we have to do a raised platform, so the equipment's not getting wet if it floods in 100 years. So anyhow, any questions? I'd love to answer them.
From the drawing there, does that indicate that that's going to be with the utility, I guess, electric panel and so forth, all that's going to be enclosed in a fence and then?
Yes, sir. The power lines and power, they'll be bringing fiber that runs up and down Kickapoo, underground to that site, down the easement that's on the north edge to the H-frame, and that'll be also raised on top of the plat, on the platform. Yes, sir.
Other questions of Troy?
Just getting us closer to 5G.
Yes, sir. We're getting, we're almost there. I'm working on a couple other things, too. I'll be back before you, before you again. But Shawnee's got, like, a couple of the highest usage sites in Oklahoma, for that matter. And I think we helped that on the North Kickapoo site, we called it the, the monopine, helped alleviate one of the sites in a big way. So, matter of fact, they already did some upgrades on it, so.
Other questions of Troy? Thank you. Is there a motion? Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
So moved.
Anyone against, Mr. Mayor?
Anyone against, I'm sorry. Now I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Is there a second?
I never do a flip-flop.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, situated within Section 13, Township 10, North Range 3, east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, as more particularly described within the ordinance, from zoning classification C3 Highway Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District with conditional use permit, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries six zero with one abstention. Item eight, consideration of approval of preliminary plat for Hyatt Addition, Section 4, located east of North Harrison Avenue and south of East 45th Street, containing 6.57 acres for purposes of single-family development, case SO120, applicant Hyatt Development LLC.
I'll start off and address Pastor Chuck's comments about 42nd Street. This was previously under different ownership of a previous developer, and they had what was platted as Phase 4 or the next phase. The current owner has proposed a smaller version of Phase 4, so it does not reflect the previous plat of the previous developer. We did have communication in our meeting minutes previously that said, when that phase, which had adjacent and access off of 42nd Street, when that was developed, they would be responsible for helping to improve that roadway, as they would be adding additional volume onto the road. This portion that you see outlined on the staff report is not adjacent to 42nd Street. And the developer did come to planning commission, and he, he expressed his intentions to eventually develop that adjacent to 42nd, and that he would be willing to look at helping to improve that road. But at this present time, there's not going to be any lots adjacent to 42nd Street, and there's also not going to be an ingress egress off of 42nd Street. And so by ordinance, we really don't have any mechanism to hold him to improve the road at this point in time. But this would be 25 additional tracks on about six and a half acres, and they have done a good job building that out, and they seem to sell those very well. I think it's a competitive price point for a housing market, and with that, staff would recommend approval, and planning commission also recommended approval unanimously.
Has the fire marshal looked at this in terms of requiring an extra point of ingress and egress?
Yes. David has looked at it, and that would be required when they have lots adjacent to 42nd, but he saw no need at this point in time to make them go ahead and have that access and do the road improvements.
On the plat, is that still on the plat to be residential there next to 42nd Street?
Yes. And so he would, that would be like a Phase 5 of the plat, and I do believe his intention is to go ahead and do another single-family residential phase.
So would that, then it would require the 42nd Street to be partially paved, then?
Yes. We did, I did check with the Streets and Engineering Department, and they have it on record as a private road on 42nd Street. And so we, we had some good conversation last week at planning commission meeting. There's a couple of single-family homes that are adjacent on the south side of 42nd, and then you have the church there at the end of the street, and then you would have the Hyatt Development owner. And so it sounds like, we can definitely look into the meeting minutes and things that he found. We found nothing on file at the courthouse that we ever accepted those as a public easement or road. So at this time, if that is the case, and it's private, it would really be the responsibility to coordinate those property owners and have them chip into the improvement. If they own 25% of the road, 25% of the cost, and so on.
Okay. Other questions of Rebecca? Is there a motion to approve?
I don't want that motion, no one else wants it.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bolt?
It's not. It's not a public hearing, is it?
It's not a public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries seven zero. Item nine, consideration of final plat for Rolling Hills South Edition, located on the southeast corner of Bryan Avenue and East Main Street, containing three acres for purposes of single-family development, case SO220, applicant TLP. for purposes of single-family development, case SO-220, applicant TLP Associates, Inc.
If you're familiar with Phase One, it's on the north side of Main Street, and that's the absentee tribe has a nice home development through there. This would be a cul-de-sac extension on the south side of Main. It's also going to be home to Shawnee Second Friendship House, and that is run by our nonprofit community renewal. So we're really excited about, about that and having them at this particular location. There would still be a couple of extra lots outside of the Friendship House for the tribe to put housing units on. We've received everything that we need. The bond was accepted, I think, last week, and so we're in a position to recommend approval for this final plat, and staff does, as well as Planning Commission.
Any questions of Rebecca? Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Bolt.
Does it include these discrepancies that need to be cleared up, or is that already included?
And we are trying to work with them on their timeframe. At the time Planning Commission met, we had not received the bond, so that contingency was based upon the fact that we received the bond before the meeting today, which we have, so.
Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Item 10, consideration of ordinance amending portions of ordinance number 2545 NS being codified as a part of the city zoning code located in Chapter 22, Article 7 of the City of Shawnee Code of Ordinances by specifically amending Section 22-262 and Table 22-262 of the code in order to regulate dimensional standards for minimum lot width and minimum street frontage requirements within A1 rural agricultural districts, providing for repeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an emergency clause. Rebecca, do you want to speak to that? No. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So what are we changing? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
And so we have an A1 table in our zoning code, and that says, and you've got the original version there in your packet, and then we've redlined the changes. It says minimum street frontage none. Now, the line above it says we have a minimum lot width requirement at 330 feet. So if, you know, you're in the planning realm, and you imagine a rectangular lot, that's 330 all the way down, therefore it's kind of repetitive to say that you need a minimum frontage of the 330. And that was recently challenged by a developer in town, and there, there were lots that were not going to meet that minimum requirement, and that individual was not wanting to invest the road infrastructure needed to service those lots appropriately. We also have a clause in there that says that we only are looking at A1 lots from a minimum of five to a max of 10 acres. With that, that creates problems because if we have a lot over 10 acres, that someone has maybe a 25-foot street frontage, which is just enough for a 20-foot driveway or some gravel to be poured, if they go to split that in the future, they're going to be unable to do so. We have hard conversations in the planning office a lot, conversations I don't like to have, but it's when someone buys a piece of property and the intention that they had for that property, our office gets to be the bearer of bad news and tell them that they have an illegal, non-conforming lot, or they are unable to split because of how it was originally configured. And so this measure is really, and this change is really going to be put in place so that we're protecting the future residents of Shawnee, and we're making sure that things are split appropriately, and we absolutely will let you split your property, but we have a subdivision regulation that says you've got to put in the infrastructure to adequately service that. And so I, I believe that these changes are going to do that for us. This original zoning code is from 1990. I hadn't started school yet in 1990, if that gives you some idea. But that is something that we're finding more and more as we get into situations in our code, and parts of it are very antiquated, such as the cell tower portion, and so we are going to propose doing overhaul and adopting a new code in the near future. We just want to adopt this so that this is not a reoccurring issue at this point in time.
So is it fair to summarize this as housekeeping?
This is housekeeping, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd move we approve. I just wanted to clarify it for everybody here. I've read the, everything in the agenda, but I just want to make sure everybody understood.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance amending portions of ordinance number 254 NS being codified as part of the city zoning code located in Chapter 22, Article 7 of the Shawnee City Code of Ordinances by specifically amending, amending Section 22-262 and Table 22-262 of the code in order to revise dimensional standards for minimum lot widths and minimum street frontage for all properties classified as A1 rural agricultural districts, providing for repeal, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for emergency clause.
Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Do we need to separately adopt, have a motion on the emergency clause? Moved by Commissioner Harrod, and second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Item 11, consideration of following budget amendments. A Fund 001, general fund, do you want to do these separately?
They can be done as well.
Ashley? You want to do them together? Okay. Fund 001, general fund adjustment for changes that have occurred since the beginning of the fiscal year. Fund 106, hotel motel fund, updating Department of Tourism budget to reflect changes since August 2019, and includes funding for grants and advertising. Fund 301, capital improvement fund, budget for Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, funding for body cameras, SP and SPF, and burn grant funds for two motorcycles. Fund 302, street improvement fund to provide for Oklahoma Department of Transportation payment for Phase One of Kickapoo Street Project, MacArthur to Kickapoo Spur.
Okay, thank you. So mostly this is just to cover things that have come up through the year. So kind of as the description stated, the general fund is just to reflect some personnel movements that have happened and other things that have popped up. Hotel motel, the original budget was just kind of a beginner budget because Stacy was just starting, so this is just to adjust as her and I have discussed what we need. And then the capital funds just reflect some additional monies that have come in from grants and also for the street project, the final bill we received from ODOT for the Kickapoo Project several years ago. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Is this going to be the, do you know whether this is a final payment on, like Kickapoo North, or do you have any idea or what?
Are you asking if it's the final payment?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Other questions of Ashley? Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Harrod. Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Monthly sales tax and budget report.
All right. So unfortunately, my good news streak ended. We were down for the month in sales tax at 8.67%. We're still above for year-to-date at 4.39%. Hopefully, it's just everyone went shopping early, so we'll keep an eye on it and make any adjustments as necessary if needed. Use tax still is sky-high. We were at 43.64% over projected budget for the month, and we're sitting at 49.7% for the year, so it's still very good, so that's always a bright spot. The budget report, as you might have noticed, is slightly different. We added a revenue section. The top graph, or if it's on both, on one page for both revenue and expenditures, is the amount of revenue earned or collected, and then the bottom is broken down by major categories, so taxes, intergovernmental revenue, et cetera, and the percentage collected. The expenditure has not changed any, except now the numbers behind the graphs are at the back of the report versus on the same page as the fund. Everything seems to be moving on correct, on well, and nothing really alarming, so I'm happy to take any questions.
I appreciate your continued improvement and tweaking of the report. It's very informative.
I tweak it a lot.
And these reports are available to everybody?
Yes. Yeah, all they have to do.
For everybody to see. So very informative, I appreciate it.
Any questions of Ashley additional? Thank you very much, ma'am. I'm 13, consideration bids, requests, and request for qualifications. A upgrade and replace City of Shawnee outdoor warning system.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. On the early warning system, as a point of record at our last meeting, American Signal Corporation had submitted a bid, and it wasn't found in one of the four binders during the meeting. They were reviewed with the other bids before this meeting, and for the record, I'd just like to say their base bid was $311,373.01, and the addenda one was $883 per siren, and addenda two was $1,750 per siren. Having said that, in reviewing the bids, staff would like to recommend that we go with Federal Signal Corporation. Their bid was $298,664.73, and with that, we would like to add the addenda two, which takes a little bit of math the way they wrote it up, but it was $28,050, and then you subtract $17,205 for a total bid with the base bid and addenda two of 309,509.73. Federal Signal Corporation was the lowest base bid and the lowest base bid plus addenda two. They did meet all of our specifications that we required for the city, and they did agree to the 120-day project completion, and most of their major components carry a five-year parts and labor warranty. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of Chief? Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Rutherford. Second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Shawnee Police Department Architect's Project Number 1811-912-EAST, Independence, Shawnee, Oklahoma, deferred from the January 21st meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff would like to recommend that we go ahead and approve the WL McNapp bid. Their base bid was $2,280,000, and with that, addenda one, which was $163,000, for a total bid of $2,443,000. WL McNapp and Company was the lowest bid received, and we reviewed a lot of their references, and we'd like to proceed with them.
Okay. Are there any questions of Chief on this item?
We're negotiating out that final contract. We'll make sure to remember to put some, I have a completion date in there too, some number of days and so forth. I'd move we accept the bid.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Second by Commissioner Sehorn. Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Item C, Broadway Street Project, request for qualifications, RFQ award deferred from the February 3rd, 2020 City Commission Agenda.
I would like to start out and describe the difference between RFQs and RFPs. It was, they'd mentioned in public comment, there was not a dollar figure associated with this project, which is correct. So RFPs, request for proposals, that's going to be anything construction-related, and that is something that you would see when we refloored the public library, its materials and labor. RFQs, request for qualifications, that's for professional services, urban planners, architects, engineers of the sort. You are asking them to submit why they are a qualified firm for your particular project, and then once you enter into that agreement, which is what I would ask of you all to consider tonight, you negotiate the scope of services that you expect and the price associated with those services. So I just wanted to start out and clarify the difference between a request for proposal and a request for qualifications before I start off. I've been here a year now, if you guys can believe that, and I thought something was interesting looking through the archives of the Shawnee New Star, so I wanted to share that with you tonight. In 2005, there was an article on the Shawnee New Star that was entitled "Main Street Businesses Have Excitement But Concerns For Improvements." And this was in reference to our downtown streetscape project. And I would say that now that it's all finished and done, and I don't think any of us in this room can argue that it's not beautiful, that it hasn't enhanced downtown, that that public investment of almost $3.5 million definitely had a, an influence or catalyzed the private investment to follow. And we have a lot of thriving businesses downtown. We had the Oklahoman make mention of one of them a couple of weeks ago on their cover page, and that's good PR for Shawnee. We'll take that any day. So I did want to mention that. Justin Erickson was also quoted, who was the previous community development director and city manager for Shawnee in a 2015 article as this project was phased out, and I want to read to you what he said. He said that he was optimistic that private investment would follow the public investment dollars of the downtown streetscape project, and I believe that it did. We are seeing private investment in new businesses because of that project in our downtown area. I am confident that the Broadway project will do the same. There are concerns about eliminating on-street parking, concerns that 45th Street widening project is in competition with the Broadway project. These projects are a very different type and scope, and I would argue that one is not contingent on the other. Ideas and concerns will be addressed by the firm that was selected to be awarded the RFQ with ample opportunity for public input. We're confident that we can come up with a viable design solution to accommodate all people of Shawnee. The Broadway project is not only a road improvement project, but its connectivity to downtown for our OBU students. It's a community amenity, much like the Bryan Street Trail system is today. It's a means to calm traffic. It's a public investment that will serve as a catalyst for private investment, just as the downtown streetscape project did. It's a tourism attraction for visitors in town, for events like the Gravel Growler and other cycling events and races. It's a quality-of-life aspect. We talk about attracting and retaining young professionals to our community. They want a low cost of living but a high quality of life, and I believe that this project helps to accomplish that in our great community. Freeze Nichols has been the firm that is elected for your approval this evening. We base that on the financial stability of their firm. We base that on comparable projects that they have completed in the city of Edmund, the city of Norman, and the city of Fort Worth. I pulled a few stats of those cities just to let you know that they value this type of project and believe that it is correlated to quality of life. Edmund has grown 14.8% over the past eight years. DFW is the fourth-largest metro in the U.S., only behind New York City, Los Angeles, and Chicago. The 2010-through-2019 DFW experienced a 20.9 population growth with an estimated 17.9 growth spurt over the next 10 years. If that is true, and Chicago remains flat, it will surpass Chicago's population in the near future. the near future. Staff unanimously agreed that Freeze Nichols was the best firm for this particular project. The review committee for this project included our city manager, Michael Ludie from Traffic and Engineering, and myself. I also want to quote, I also want to share a quote with you from Brent Kissling, who is the Director of the State Department of Commerce, and he was quoted in the Oklahoman article that I mentioned earlier, a couple of weeks ago, and he said this. "I think the main reason this is happening is there is a lot of optimism in our state right now. The goal is to attract and retain a generation that is entrepreneurial, community-oriented, and looking for a low cost of living with a high quality of life. I believe this project will accomplish that. Staff does recommend approval, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have."
It's obvious what type of investments would follow the Main Street. I mean, I mean, the Main, actually, the downtown project. What type of investments do you think would just tend to bring in for the Broadway project?
I think we'll see residential investments around that corridor, but I also think we're going to see quality of life, that it gives young families and college graduates, specifically our OBU graduates, more reason to stay. And I'm going to share something with you that I'm a little embarrassed about, but my husband played baseball for OBU a few years ago, maybe twenty-five, and when he did, he did not come to our downtown until his junior year. He had, in his mind, he had no reason to come downtown. Everything he needed was kind of on campus or very close around campus. If we are to give them a way to get downtown, whether it's an international student that doesn't drive a car, or this is a recreational opportunity, a transportation opportunity, I think those students will fall in love with our community if we give them the infrastructure to be able to get across our community. At this time, I don't think that we have that in place.
I do understand that development of cities very often can conflict with individuals' particular problems they might have. That's pretty normal, I guess, and we've looked at a couple of things, for instance, with the Expo Center, with the Senior Center, that we have moved ahead with in spite of some public outcry, and those were good decisions. We had deep information as to the particulars that would occur. In other words, we had planning done that showed us exactly what kind of improvements that would allow us to put into it, investments for the city under full control of it, as well as the specters of future, past performances in doing the job and pulling in a higher degree of event days during a year and maybe tripling what we had. We saw that, I could see that. So, I could see, understand, probably backing away from questions that people had as far as ownership of various parts of it, which I understand, we hopefully got through most of that, but we have other problems in integrating these things. But the overall success that would come out of this, the potential of it, was a lot. In other words, maybe ninety percent, eighty-five percent of the days we would have people come in in the community would be event days, compared to a much smaller percent that's there with little potential to do more. It's also true that, of course, adding a corporation such as we did brings together all of the particular talents, so you don't have to try to piecemeal them. In other words, a lot of good reasons that we could see to do that. This is a little bit different, and, but I understand the potential of it, but the potential is kind of in the future. It's something that just doesn't jump out at you, and it does put people in problematic situations. I just wonder, is there any type of circumstance where you could look to move ahead with what I think is a good project, and still not have this many people impacted with the parking situation and service trucks and things of that nature?
Absolutely. So, something that they submitted as part of their RFQ package was a buffered bike lane that would keep on-street parking on one side, so we wouldn't eliminate all of the on-street parking. I can tell you, coming back from lunch, I took Union instead of Broadway, and I realized how narrow Union is, and that those people don't have the privilege of on-street parking. Most of us don't. That is something that, it's, it was a historic thoroughfare, it housed a streetcar, hence it's forty feet wide, but I do, I think that, I haven't heard a concern that cannot be incorporated into this design, and this firm is committed to doing a lot of community input and outreach, so that those concerns can be addressed within the design of the project. I would like to remind you guys that no formal design has been committed at this point in time, and this item tonight would only be to hire that firm to create the right design for the people of Shawnee.
So, vote on this for qualifications in no way says that this is a totally done deal, but still negotiations and various other things, plus an independent vote of whoever may be on the commission at the time that does that, that comes up. So, I could feel fairly free to go ahead and say this, even though I'd probably have thirty thousand, thirty thousand or something like that to move into this project.
So, how much money are you talking about for the contract?
So, what we had talked about, and we have a fifty-fifty grant with the Avitas Foundation, is one point two million, so that's six hundred dollars.
Just for the-
Oh, so-
That's to be negotiated.
Yes, that's to be negotiated because it's RFQ instead of the RFP, so that would be negotiated based on the scope of services that we negotiate with Freeze Nichols.
But again, we have assurances that this is the first stages, but there will be negotiations. At least some of the situations that people have commented on can be addressed. Do we feel there's potential for that?
Absolutely, and to speak to Commissioner Sehorn's comment or question, so typically your design and engineering services can run, if I, if I go high, about twenty percent of the project total, and so I would say that is a realistic ballpark of the expectation.
Cut that out, no?
Yes, sir.
In initial phase, I'm given to understand that, that we likely would start out with their submitting some sketches, and so that the engineering and the topographical work that they would do in shooting elevations and the surveying that really would constitute most of that hundred and eighty thousand dollars would come much later after this, after this commission or future commission decides to take that second bite of the apple after we look at these initial sketches and drawings, which will be a much lesser figure I'm given to understand. Is that correct?
That is correct. We anticipate the construction drawings to be well into next fiscal year, and so, yes, we would just probably pay a monthly invoice at this point for work that was completed for the month prior at this point in time.
I've got some comments I want to make, but I don't have any questions. I mean, I don't want to create an argument discussion or anything, but I don't, I don't have any more questions, but I do have some comments. First of all, the Main Street project was built with Tiff District Funds. It wasn't built with Shawnee General Funds or street funds or anything like that. That was built with, with taxes in lieu of taxes and improvements of the businesses in that area, so that's one thing I want to point out, is there's a difference in the funding. Also, it's brought out here tonight that, you know, we've overspent our budget the last two or three years from five to seven million dollars, according to whoever you want to talk to and things like that. I'm not opposed to the project, but I am opposed to it at this time. I think that, you know, it would be an improvement for Broadway, and it would be a future improvement for, to come to Woodland Park whenever that project is done in the future. I'm opposed to any kind of activity that would remove any kind of parking off of Broadway on either side, so along with the deferment of cost, we sold bonds in twenty eighteen for, to be able to do South Kickoo. I don't know what those cost or how much those costs have been expended to date, but I know that part of that cost was for the police station and for the library and for the community center and things like that, which we have done, but we still are in progress or in the process of buying right of way for South Kickoo at this time, and we're committed to that project. And we diverted some of the funds from the one-half cent sales tax to that project, and that one-half cent sales tax was dedicated or pledged to the Forty-Fifth and for MacArthur, MacArthur Street. So, I would, again, I think it's fiscally irresponsible for this commission to even consider that project until we get some money built back up into the street and alley fund so that we can, we can pay ourselves back. We're operating on, we're taking money out of future projects to pay for today's projects, which is not, you know, not a, I don't think, business-wise, it's fiscally sound. We, like I say, the parking had to be settled. I don't want to pin on an outside engineer to tell me whether I can park my car or whether I can't park my car on the, on the street or something like that. I just, I think that there's a lot of, you know, things that need to be done. I don't have any idea where the project's going to start, don't have any idea where the project's going to end, whether it's going to be on Main Street, Highland, Tenth Street, or which street it's on. And if it comes all the way to Main Street, the county has quite an investment in the courthouse and on both sides of Broadway there, so, you know, if they've been involved in any of this. I'm just, I guess, the more I saw it on the agenda, the more upset I came, and I hadn't been able to sleep in the, in the last two or three days to think that, you know, we're going to try to spend, and I'm, I don't think the project, it'll come closer to two million dollars, or it will be to one point two million. So, I don't know that that's good fiscal responsibility for us to be able to jump off at this time and to, and to do that. Again, we're in the hole about five to seven million dollars, now this, you know, I'm, for that fiscal reason alone, I can't vote for the project. I don't care what you think the future's going to be. I do care that, I've seen all the growth in downtown, but again, you're talking about two different fundings, two different types of fundings for the project. The Tiff District paid for that funding on Main Street, and this is coming out of the street funds for the City of Shawnee. It's not, Broadway's not been on any long-range planning, and I've been on this commission, this is my fourth term, and I haven't seen Broadway Street on any long-term planning for, for this city, and to, for us to turn around and to put that in a higher priority than the Forty-Fifth Street or MacArthur Street, with a school being built down on Forty-Fifth. We had, I remind the commission, less than a year ago, we laid off twenty-three, retired twenty-three employees to cut expenses, and here we're turning around, going to spend six hundred thousand. I just can't agree with that philosophy, I'm sorry.
Chance, update us a little bit on, on where you feel like we are from a fiscal standpoint, because you and I had that discussion, and it's not, it's not near as simplistic as what Commissioner Harrod is presenting.
Yeah, the five to seven million dollar deal I'm taking back with, I want to hear that from Chance.
Let Chance answer my question.
Mr. Mayor, to be specific, this project was budgeted for this year. We built reserves back up considerably, and related to even the general fund that's been shored up from our personnel issues. We were, we were overspending effectively, and as far as the capital funds, we've built those up to, I don't have that in front of me, but we're probably sitting somewhere between eight and ten million.
So, we, we've had substantial recovery from the point that Commissioner Harrod thinks we are. Secondarily, by your comments, you've said you don't know if it's going to end at Main or Highland or where it's going to end, and that's my point, is we can't have a plan, almost without exception, the people that live on Broadway, and every person on this commission has said it's, what's the plan? We don't know what the plan is until we take this first bite of the apple. It's not like we're deciding to spend a million two or a million eight. This is a design phase, and I think in order to answer the next question, that it's worth some amount of consulting fee to get those, those questions answered for the people that live out there and, and for the people on this commission, and I feel strongly, it's just as strongly as Commissioner Harrod is opposed, that, that it's something that we need to consider to take this first bite of the apple.
The, I think that's the, the parking and where it starts and where it ends and everything is a commission responsibility, not an outside engineer.
It is, and, and I expect that they'll bring that plan to us, and we will sit down with the residents and see if there's any room for compromise or not, because to my knowledge at this point, none of those discussions have been had. We've got an opposing group, and we've got an in-favor group, and those two groups are not talking, and we don't have anything to talk around at this point. So, let's, let's put the plan together and, and begin to survey the residents that are up and down Broadway and see if there's room for compromise, if there's not. If there's not, then, then we come back to this commission, and you guys can vote no if you want to vote no.
The, well, I think, you know, again, we haven't made up seven million dollars, I can tell you for sure.
Well, there's the man that's got the numbers, and he doesn't agree with you.
I can, I just got to looking over the financial report, and it doesn't show seven million dollars, eighteen million dollars ahead in a, in a financial report. It's right, black and white in front of us.
Commissioner Harrod, excuse me. The budget document wouldn't show those figures because it's going to be the difference in the cash flow we've reserved from the savings.
Knowing that this project was in the budget all the time, I can tell you for sure. I never dreamed that it would even come up for a vote, but I knew the commission would have that vote, and, you know, I, I'm not against Blue Zone, I'm not against the Adidas, or I'm not against the trails or anything else, but we had to cancel projects last year because we didn't have the money, and here we're turning around and talking about spending six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars, even a million dollars that we don't have.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, I'm under the impression that we're supposed to represent the thirty-one thousand or so people in Shawnee, and not just a certain group of people that want us to spend over a million dollars for a project. And like it's been pointed out, we laid people off fifteen months ago, or, no, actually, early retirement of those people. We've got too many potholes, streets that need curbs and gutters. When it rains, the water runs into the yard, in some cases, all the way up to the house. We need to take care of those things. And the City of Shawnee residents were nice enough to us three years ago to give us another half-cent sales tax, and one of the items on it was Forty-Fifth Street, widening of Forty-Fifth Street. And I don't want to see Forty-Fifth get put up on the shelf there for four or five years, like we've put a lot of plans in the past up on the shelf. And so, I just, I just don't like the idea of dangling a carrot in front of my face and using city money, and then anything that's left over, we can use it for other projects.
I do have a little problem too, I guess, with saying we can negotiate about some of these things. I'm trying to find, within my considerations, what are the, can they, where can the negotiations go? They either do or don't park there, the bike lines are or not there? What is it that can be negotiated?
Mr. Commissioner, the Freeze and Nichols, we, we have an opportunity to negotiate how much effort we want them to spend on certain criteria for what we're asking them to do. So, they can provide services for us to develop design and engineering reports to show us the possibilities that are available to us, that can have, essentially, they'll provide two-scale drawings. That means they're not going to do detail work, or they do a hundred percent design that they would give in a bid package to contractors, but-
So, it's your concept that the concerns that people had, that they've talked to us about, that they can be mitigated or done away with? You believe that?
Yes, sir. They can produce options that we might not be aware of, for, for urban planning and urban design that are, that are options for street parking that, that we haven't considered yet.
And this will come back to us again-
Correct.
Whoever's on the commission.
It, it will come to a commissioner's decision. That's correct.
And you feel there's reason enough to move ahead on this, on the basis there could be negotiations, it would make appreciable differences that will please at least most of the people.
Certainly. They will do that through community engagement efforts.
Okay.
The firm is committed to it.
I'll come back and talk to you when I'm off the commission, if it doesn't. Okay.
The problem that I see is with the contract itself, you're specifying in the contract that there's going to be eighty-five hundred feet, a minimum of eighty-five hundred feet of bike lanes. You're putting in the contract that's going to be the roundabouts, you're putting in the contract that there's going to be artwork on the roundabouts, and you got in the contract there's going to be a gateway to the Shawnee, so, I mean- So, I mean, we need to think about the contract with that engineering.
Certainly. Mr. Commissioner, those, those items were on the RFQ just for suggestions so they would be able to properly qualify whether or not they could address those objectives.
But nothing says those.
But nothing is set in stone. That's correct. That's why we would have them do design work to help us understand what we can and cannot do.
And just for clarity, there is no contract yet.
Why was that?
It was the RFQ.
All right, okay, I'm sorry.
All that is...
It's not binding.
So, you're asking them to address their qualifications that might include the, the list of the following laundry list of items?
I should mention, all, all this is, is to accept this particular contractor to help us. In the event we engage with them, that contract will become a for you all for approval.
So, you're talking about somewhere around $200,000, $225,000, $250,000?
And to that, we're not sure, we'll have to...
Yeah. Well, maybe just a minute on 20%, you're talking about $240,000.
That, that includes full design?
That includes...
Which includes topography and, and engineering and those kinds of things. Before we get to that point, we'll have preliminary designs that we can talk to the, the residents up and down Broadway, the other residents in the community as well, come back to the commission. And that number will be substantially below the, the full-blown construction drawings. So, there's a, there's an intermediate step here that I think you're missing.
That's correct.
Other questions? Comments?
Mr. Salter's comments on 45th, I, I worked personally pretty hard on that sales tax initiative and, and agree that 45th needs to be a priority. I believe 45th is a priority and is going to be started, yeah, you got an estimate on when engineering's gonna start on 45th?
We, we've discussed that occurring this calendar year. Now, granted, as to Rebecca, as she knows, that's a very different project and that is a full-blown widening project. So, engineering and design will, that street will more than likely have to be phased in. And, and I do want to note that on the half-cent sales tax that was elected in June of 2018, I believe, if I recall correctly, that was just addressing the two intersections at 45th and Harrison and 45th and Kickaboo. At this time...
Also addressed MacArthur.
Right. Staff, you know, with, with as busy as that road is, I mean, each one of those intersections are 20,000-plus car a day intersections. I, I think we can all agree with the school that will, that will be going in on 45th with the 15 acres that Sean Pope's school's just purchased. We're gonna have to address from Leo to Bryan. So, it, this, this, that project really is beyond the scope of just the intersections at this point. We're gonna have to look at the entire roadway.
And what we're looking at here is really gonna have no bearing on what we're gonna do on 45th. That's a, that's gonna be a major separate project like Kickaboo was, like Main Street.
That's correct. It'll take several years to even develop that and design that because we'll have to have Broadway acquisition. There's gonna be construction time for it to phase that in.
One ancillary benefit...
We're going on west, by the way, from Kickaboo.
Right.
So, we're enclosing that area to develop, create, plenty more development on that area. Between that and I-40.
One ancillary benefit of, of talking about Broadway is we've got a big east-west problem with traffic coming down Independence. George Fisher's expecting to add 200 employees in the next two or three years. That's gonna exacerbate that problem. So, if you've not looked at the traffic on Independence, and I, I can't help but believe that, that part of the solution on Broadway is also the solution on Independence, which we're gonna have to address. We're gonna have to address it well before we, we get very far down the road with MacArthur.
The messages that I've received, I know Ben's received a bunch, I've received, we've all received a bunch of messages, and my answer has been, we don't know what this is going to look like. We don't know what options are available. I'm not an engineer. I heard 40 feet, 40-foot width of streak. Well, until we have engineering, what can you do with 40, with 40 feet? Can you maintain your parking? Can you have a bike lane? Can you improve? Can you make, can you put lamppost lightings and, and down the sidewalk? Can we, can we do all of those on a 40-foot street? Can, can you only do one? Do we need a roundabout? Do we not need a roundabout? Do we need bump outsers? It can be improved, hopefully, without negatively impacting people that live down the street. But we, we don't know if that's possible until we look at it. Is it a nice thing to, it'd be, it'd be a great to, to see, but it may be, we just don't know. We don't know the answers until we find out the answer, the, the answers to these questions. And that's, that's what we, that's what we don't know. We're not, we're not voting to approve spending millions of dollars. We're, we're not voting to make people move off their street parking. We're not voting to put this in. We're voting to have the opportunity to see some possibilities on what we can do down that street.
Right.
And it's gonna allow us to have some of the conversations that people have been wanting to have. And to this point, we really haven't been able to do that. So, I think that's another healthy thing that could come out of this.
Are we, are we gonna be able to limit the total number of dollars we're spending until we see it again?
That's a possibility. One of the, you know, we had CLS look at our parks a few years ago, and that's something we could do is we could, we could engage them to develop some concepts and work with community engagement, and then we could have a second, separate agreement for construction phase, because that's where the bulk of your cost is gonna come from, because that's generally a total, a percentage of total constructed cost.
I know, I know, complete engineering is very expensive to get done.
Right.
But, but concepts are not as, as expensive. So, if we could, if we had concepts from Fries and Nichols, and maybe that's a, an option that could get us in a good, a, a good direction to, just to see the options without paying for complete engineering on something we don't know if we, we want to do.
And, and keep in mind, until, until you begin construction, they're not, they can't charge you for the, that percentage, because it's gotta be percent of completed construction. So, your construction would have to start before they can bill for that portion of it.
For the concept or for the engineering?
For the engineering, for the total engineering.
So, can we not move for the concept and worry about the engineering later? I mean, 'cause I, I'm, just like Jones, I have a problem committing to a quarter million dollars for something we may or may not want to do. And I think everybody hears, you know, we understand the concept is a good concept, it would benefit the city, but is our money well-spent that way is the biggest concern all of us have. So, and, you know, whether we spend the money right now and then go, you know, once we get 45th done, we want to do it then. I mean, we're not locked in to having to do it this fiscal year just because it's in the budget. I think everybody agrees with the concept.
Commissioner Harrod responded a couple of ways, just to clarify some points that I think have been made. This vote is just simply selecting Fries and Nichols, number one. Number two, any contract, whether that's a bifurcated contract that has design services and community engagement in one piece and then ultimately engineering services in another, those contracts, whether there's one or more, are gonna come back before this commission for approval. And so, once, just approving them tonight is not gonna guarantee them a contract.
I suppose this is just saying you're open to...
I guess the question is, is if we decide no, how much money are we into it already?
I, I would say zero dollars.
What do we do with, going ahead with this?
At tonight's vote, outside of staff time, at this point, you're simply selecting Fries and Nichols as the entity to engage with in a, a contract negotiation. If you ultimately, as a commission, decline whatever contract is negotiated, then you would be out staff time.
Staff time. All we're out to date is the staff time.
That's correct.
Of course, we discussed that, right, with the city manager before we put out requests for qualifications that need to come before the commission and so that we can have this discussion ahead of time rather than after the fact. And even with, you know, you're talking about 200,000 or 225, $240,000. My point is still the same. I don't think we, fiscal can afford it because we got these other projects we need to do first. And I, my point's not gonna change on that.
We're not talking about $240,000, are we changing?
Well, that's when time to get full design, you are.
We don't have full design and, and this vote tonight, James, is not to engage them to do full design. So, don't construe it to be that, because it's not...
Well, that's what it'll wind up being, I'm sorry.
It may, but we're gonna get to vote on it before we get to take that step. Any other comments, questions? Call question?
We need a motion.
Oh, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries four yes, three no. Item 14, new business. Is there any new business?
No new business.
Commissioner comments?
Man, man, we have a lot to talk about tonight. You know, I hope people realize that, that all we did was just hire a engineering firm, and there's still a lot to talk about. And we're very open to talking about, about everything. And, you know, I just encourage people to engage in that conversation and, and let's work forward with this in a, you know, very orderly and, and a means that'll make sense and, and, you know, do what's right for our community. There's been a lot of good concerns raised, and I think we need to address all of those. Obviously, 45th Street is a big priority and we, and we need to deal with that. I think everybody, everybody in this room knows that. Anybody that's driven on 45th Street knows that. But, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that we, we deal with that. So, anyway, appreciate everybody coming up tonight.
I guess the only thing I feel pretty good about this is that I won't be around probably to make the final decision and that Ward Two will be open coming up in, I guess, June. I'm not gonna rerun. And I wonder if anybody out there that might be living close to, like on Broadway, for instance, might want to run for that Ward Two seat, and then they'll have a full input for the real mates of this when it comes down. And at 83 years of age, I won't have to deal with it. So, other than that, I'll pass it on.
Well, after, like I said, I've been upset all weekend about this and my philosophy hasn't changed, but my philosophy on what I'm gonna do the next four years has, because I'm not gonna sit around and, and be responsible for the city. You know, spending money we don't have, so I'm telling you, I'm gonna, I guess, announce tonight I'm running again. I've served four terms and wasn't wanting to serve, but I, you know, I just cannot step by and, and I know how long it took to save that $4,000 to $5 million or $7 million, whatever it was, and it, it don't happen in one year. So, I appreciate your work, Chance, and everything else, but I know it took 20 years and three, and at least three mayors to get that built up, so it's not gonna happen overnight. But I am gonna be here to make sure, try to happen again.
I think I'm being quiet, but I'm not going to. This was probably the first, I've, I've, three and a half years of being on the commission, this is the first a little bit contentious vote that we've had amongst each other and with, with this much community involvement on both sides of this issue. And not that I welcome this particular issue as contention, but it is, it is healthy for a community to, to, to come out and look at both sides of things. There's a lot of things that we should've had probably more, more people speak up. So, it's good to hear people speaking up and we can listen. You know, I, I believe the vote we took, we are just beginning to, to look and have options and there's no decision made yet. And I, and like I said, first contentious vote, or kind of a split vote that we've had and, but I think all seven of us are gonna move on to the next thing and yes, and, and it's not gonna be a big, it's not gonna be a big deal as far as how we are. I don't know how to make that any sweeter, but it, it's, it's good to have this much discussion, I guess.
I agree, you know, the input from everybody, and well, I should say the lack of it is probably my main concern, you know, from a standpoint, the, the people that have property on the street, you know, they probably have more stake in this than any of us do, just because it's gonna directly affect them. My biggest concern is the other projects that we need to do, will this affect it or not? The cost of what we'll spend to find out what we can do with that amount of money, I think that, that, that's gonna be the, I think the 1.2 million that's been set aside won't be near enough when engineering gets a hold of it. You know, if we're spending, you know, the 1.2, if we're spending a quarter million dollars on top of that just in engineering, you know, we're already, already at 1.5. So, I think it's a neat project. I think it's good for the city. I think, you know, the economic value of it is good. It's just the timing is bad. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but those of you that really know me know that I can't be quiet. Through all of these years since we've been discussing this, probably three, starting three years ago when I had the first meeting on the Broadway project, I received my first phone call positive for the Broadway project this past Thursday at 2:00. Everyone that has talked to me over these three years has been a no, or you're not gonna vote for it, are you? And since Thursday, I've gotten four phone calls for the project, and I might say they were all on my unlisted telephone number. That's all I've got to say.
I, I guess I have a couple of comments. We're, we're concerned about future costs, and, and I will remind you that budget season is upon us. So, once again, we'll be looking at, at those budgets and these line items on an ongoing basis, and we'll be doing it in the next 60 days. So, that's on the immediate horizon. As to the, the gentleman that, that addressed the dispensary fees, those are a direct reflection of the, of the change in the state licensure requirements and the number of places and the number of times that our staff has to touch that annual application. So, it's not just a matter of us looking at other communities and saying, well, broken arrow's $2,500, we think we can get $1,500. It's a reflection of the time and effort that's devoted to it by our staff, and we have no control over what the state requires us to do on that application process. Thirdly, I'd like to address a little bit of what Blue Zones is and Blue Zones isn't. You people that think Blue Zones is telling this commission or people in town what to do are just nuts. I've been very close to this since the very beginning, when we went to Albert Lee, Minnesota, and looked at it. What Blue Zones does, at least in this community, is they assimilate and disseminate information about how to make healthy choices in your life. Now, what you choose to do with that information is completely up to you. We've tried, they've tried to put together a wellness district where we can restrict outdoor smoking and some of those things that we all know, what the history of the science. We've looked at the vaping issue, and the things that this commission has done is, is we've endorsed certain policies that they've recommended. We've not passed any regulatory regime that I know of at all, and, and it's not likely that that will happen. So, you can go on the internet and read about Blue Zones if you want to, or you can watch Ancient Aliens on the History Channel. I guess the choice is up to you. But as far as the impact on this community, that's what they do. And their sole goal is to provide you with information about how to live longer and live healthier. And if you don't like that goal, then I'm truly sorry for you. And with that, we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question.
Motion carries seven zero. Item two, discussion, consideration, possible action on agreement with H.W. Lochner, Inc. Bonnie?
Come talk to us, Bonnie.
Same topic that my colleague Rebecca started out with here. We selected Lochner Engineering through a request for qualifications process last year, as is the requirement of the FAA. With most professional engineering services, because it is for public works and public safety, you don't discuss fees, you discuss their quality of capacity, because you want people to be safe. And then later on, after you describe the scope of work, then you negotiate the fees. So, in this particular case, back in June of 2019, we did select the Lochner Engineering Firm to be the civil engineer for the airport's projects for the next five years through that process, and this commission approved that selection that made by staff. This would be the, this will be the very first project we used Lochner for since that time, which, as you may recall, is the resurfacing of the runways and taxiways out at the airport. And because it is FAA-funded, we are required to use the team that we selected. Another FAA requirement also is, is that once we do negotiate the specific fees for this particular project, that we send that proposed fee to a third-party independent engineering firms. They can look at that and say, "The scope of work makes sense, the amount of fees they're charging makes sense." There was a small discrepancy, and they did come, rude associates, the third-party engineer, did come back to staff and make a recommendation for a negotiated change, which we did do with Lochner, and Lochner did agree to lower their fees by some six thousand dollars related to that one section of work. The scope of work in this particular case is all-inclusive, from the very initial designs, shooting the runways and surfaces, through the bidding process, preparing the specific documents necessary for bidding, and then through the construction oversight phase as well. The total amount requested under the addendum to the master agreement for this particular project is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred dollars. The estimated cost of construction for the entire project being nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. The preliminary design should be ready by the end of March, with the final design ready to bid by the end of April. And once the bids have been received and awarded, the construction phase is estimated to be between sixty and seventy-five days. Of course, that'll be weather contingent, because of course, it's surface work, so if it's raining sometimes, we can't really get to it at that particular moment. The Airport Advisory Board is recommending the approval of the addendum as is staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the project.
Any questions of Bonnie?
Is, is one-seven-three-five concrete or asphalt, or a combination?
It's combinations, and so what we're doing is looking at areas now where certain areas have been, that are asphalt, like on the taxiways, and the adjoining sections of the runways, you have, we are gonna do a lot of cutting and sealing. We won't necessarily be ripping off the entire surface and putting it back down fresh. We don't have quite that much money, although we do have seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we got in extra discretionary to do this project, just in case anybody was wondering where the money was coming from. That would be FAA dollars.
Any other questions?
Well, some of that is because of the airplane and so forth, doesn't mean to be concrete. It has to be asphalt such as that, that certain areas of the, of the landing strip, they can't be...
It's, it's, they are mixed surfaces, depending on what section you're talking about. And, and it is also the, the FAA's recommendation that, you know, you do these types of projects where you do the rehabilitation and the enhancement, so that you can keep the life of the runway open longer and not have to do a complete resurface. And the concrete sections are difficult to do, 'cause it's a lot of cutting. And the asphalt's great, but for areas like where we are here in Oklahoma, as you know, asphalt suffers from the wind, the sun, and drying out, and blowing out the petroleum bases. And so, there's some sections where you're better off doing things with concrete. A little bit more expensive, lasts a little bit longer on the landing surface, but say, for instance, the taxiways, you don't need quite that level of strength.
That was kinda my, yeah, I didn't understand.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question. Motion carries seven zeros. Is there any new business?
No new business.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority, and would enter, would consider a, consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven zeros. Is there any new business?
No new business.